Because if we were to approve it in May, our meeting in May is the 6th. We could approve it next month and then on the 6th of May, would that be too late?
I'm looking at the calendar, it would work, but what I'm hearing is the county wants to see that the city is behind us, it's kind of like chicken and their egg time. I think the sooner the city can get through its process, it'll be easier to get the other parties to take action on this. Not to try to diminish the importance of this, but this, from the city's perspective, is pretty significant. If we can reduce the rate increase from 42% to 26%, hopefully it's not too controversial an action.
Hope you met with David Weggel today and he said that we could go ahead and put a special meeting on 14. We just didn't.
To say it, nobody, nobody has seen the 10 board members that work.
Right.
Hopefully we can.
Well, that's what we're hoping about first, to get his permission to fail. And go back direction and then come to you guys.
So you say, all right, so you're saying we have to by the 1st of May sell some bonds, is that what do we sell?
There'll be longer strike in Congress.
Now, are those, is that from the bond orders that we did in 2015, 2016?
No, that'll be the bond ordinance, be introduced a bond ordinance this evening, or you'll take action on a bond ordinance introduction this evening. That starts that process. And then you'll take final action at your April.
Have a specific schedule, I thought you were closing out something else and starting something new in May.
Let me, because this is important in terms of, you know, how you're coming up with your $500,000 in three years. You have the revenue stream that's being sent to you from the Conditif by the county. Right now, it's running, let's say, $1.5 million. You're taking that money and part of it, you're paying off water bonds, and part of it, you're paying off sewer bonds. You're going to have those bonds paid off by 2022. So once those are paid off, you have the $1.5 million available, and we're going to ask for the $500,000 in that. That's what I meant in terms of transition.
So 2022, when the 2007 bonds are paid off, coming in how that 1.5 is going to be used as available then?
$500,000 of it will replace the money that the county is kicking in in the next three years.
$1.5 million.
That's still to be determined, it's not committed to anything currently?
They could also be used to buy the rate stuff.
It could.
Okay.
Yeah, probably, it wouldn't do you any, I mean, you could plan on that, but it wouldn't help you today because you don't have, the county's only committing $500,000 a year. So let's say.
Hope you could also potentially utilize your urban ratifies. How confident are we in the newest, that's accurate?
The 1.5.
For the project?
Oh, the project? I'll let Darren speak to that.
He already talked to me about that, I just curious what you're thinking about.
The, my answer to those types of questions are estimating project cost is a combination of science and art. It's, the way they develop the estimates is they know from the development of the bid specs, you know, what the types of quantities and actions that are going to be required. And they have actively talked with the types of companies that are going to bid on this. And those companies are going to give them, give them estimates. And they try to give them, and they'll try to lowball it, you know, they try to give you reasonable estimates. That's how you develop these numbers. Then you get to the time when the bids are actually going to be taken. And that's where it gets a little bit cloudy because, well, first of all, let me tell you, this is a good sized project, I mean, it's a big project. And that's, has positives and negatives. Positives, I mean, you're getting people's attention. Darren told me before the meetings, he's already, in the first two days, he's had like six inquiries of companies. Competition is going to drive the pencil, it's going to sharpen the pencil if you want that. The size will probably preclude some companies from doing it on their own, they may have to combine to do this, so, you know, they might take a couple of companies out of the bidding. But competition is going to determine how accurate these estimates are. If you're going against these companies having other projects already signed up and in the, kind of in their fold for this year, you know, they're not as, they're not as hungry for these projects and their bids will reflect that. If we get a goofy event, like a major storm that has an impact on the, on the economy, you know, I've seen that have temporary impacts on the bid. That's where the, you know, when I say it's science and art, the science is, they do a lot of work in terms of trying to get feedback where the market is. The art is, there's, you know, if you're hitting the calendar at the wrong time, where people aren't hungry for bids, or they've got things lined up, they're not going to be as aggressive, and the bids will reflect it. If there's a crazy storm knocks out the petroleum industry and we've got, you know, petroleum-based piping or something, those prices will skyrocket and, you know, it'll have an impact on your pricing. So those are things that it's really hard to predict. Darren?
I share constantly with you, we've put together estimates of 50%, 50% and 100%. Gave you a timeline, 50% was August of this year and 100% was basically this year. And we are within 1% of those numbers at this point. We have reached out to some of the major suppliers. Since then, we've tried to get an update, we haven't got a lot of feedback until December. So we're as confident as we can be, John did a real good job explaining what goes into putting these estimates. We contact all the equipment suppliers, we cost from all of them. We contact all piping, we contact all material suppliers to get estimates from them. And we've gotten updates every time we've done a major milestone, that being the planning stage, which is roughly 10%. So that was back in July, or June of 2017. Or like I said, 50% was in August of this year and 100% was the end of this, that assembly, the building. We've gotten.
And this is just construction, right, this is not engineering, land acquisition or any of that?
This is just construction.
What lanes are being purchased?
That's right.
That's the first lane first year? Yeah, just to have the engineering. The, it's just like the south side of the Skoda project, it came in at 600,000. We got bad bids back at 400, 45, something like that.
A little different, I mean, the original estimate was 13 and a half million, now it's 24 and a half.
Right.
And that's probably the difference.
But that was three, four years ago. And it was just an idea to get us started, so.
Still probably a pretty big difference. So, so are we estimating that a quarter will be engineering costs? So this is about 18,000 and then the non-construction costs were about 6 million in the new estimate.
The non-engineering or non-construction costs is what we're using?
Well, that, in that, the, the estimate that we've increased 10% to give us that ceiling consists of construction including contingency of 18.4 million. And then we've got 4.1 million of non-construction, construction to contingency costs. The, about 2.7 of that is engineering. And then we got resident inspection, that's another 600,000, so that's 3.3. And then the balance is made up of the land acquisition costs, then professional fees and what's, professional fees are about 134,000, that's the attorneys, the marketing fees, et cetera. And then we have an allowance for an asset management plan for 75,000. That's a new state requirement for going through the SRF program. It's actually not a bad idea, but you have to develop a long-term asset strategy plan and financial management plan. So we build in $75,000 that, to fund that over the next couple of years.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're not back here in three years again, having to talk about adjusting rates.
We will be, possibly because of the facts of going up, the prices going up and stuff. Because we do a three-year rate study, right? And that's what we did here before.
I mean, how much did we raise last?
We'll change it all year, we'll change next year.
3%.
3%, 2.5%?
Now we're talking about somewhere between 26 and 42%.
That's driven by, and this is, this is a good question and it's a good discussion to have. You know, what's driving the increases of this project? We've had some rate increases, cost increases since the last, just cost of doing business from the last time we did rate increase three years ago. Labor costs are higher, benefit cost, insurance, older infrastructure, those things are all, cost of doing business, those are going to go up. What's driving this, you know, 26 to 42% increase is a $22 million, $23 million project. But three years from now, you're not going to be doing a big project, but you are going to have over that timeframe, labor cost increases, benefit cost increases. So that, we're not building that, that into this rate increase today. We'll be back talking to you, but you won't be talking about 26% increases, but increases like you've looked at of the last couple of increases. And you want to do that, I mean, obviously, decisions on rates and charges is a responsibility of this council. Some councils choose to pull off on doing any increases and then they back pop up and then you've got a huge increase. And maybe you do that every seven or eight years, 10 years or so. Others are more proactive and they try to keep those increases in a few percentage ranges and do it more frequently. That's what SRF likes to see you do. That's what you've done here in the last 15 years, I would say. But I've been coming here for over 30 years and there have been times where you wouldn't see me for 10 years and then you have a 50% increase because they kind of stockpiled. So that's a, that's a decision that, you know, the council will make at that time, but there is an obligation that you take, at least take a look at it and get a report on how you're doing financially.
Say 555, is that what we do on 55? 15%.
It was about nine, 10 years ago, we did the 2.5, 2.5, 2.5, I think. Yeah, well, we did the 555 to fund, to fund this project. And that's, you know, that, it was 555 to take care of the needs then. That's why we, if you, if you think about it, we talked about this project, but we made, we wanted to make it clear that the increase needed for this project was we could come back to you to have that, that those increases of 555, we're not going to take care of the project this magnitude, whether it was 12 million or 12 million.
And that, the increases on just the water, not the sewer?
Correct.
Or the sanitation?
Correct.
Do we, do we know what our average, do we know what our average water bill is right now? What's our average water bill?
Our average water bill is probably $35 to $17.
Or just water?
Just water.
Without sewer, too?
Just water.
$17 every foot.
We run that on about 533 cubic feet, and it's around $30, $34?
For apps, no, most of the residential, that would be with everything.
That's everything.
Sorry.
Well, I, all right, I'll just use what I know. So, so I think that's $60, water sewer, so it's like 30 is water. So you're looking at a quarter.
And the other thing we can think about as too is when you come back and bring back rates, rate projections, maybe we could look at if we were to put more money in instead of just the 500,000, like Kevin mentioned, maybe we can come up with 250,000 a year for two years out of Riverboat, maybe one year out of Bennett, to subsidize that, maybe there's 750,000 a year until those bonds are paid off and then, you know, what would that change the rates to or some, you know, maybe some different options, right?
We can do that.
What would that do?
And what you, the way you might want to do that, again, because we're in the timeframe here, we've got to have everything locked in and done when we price with the SRF program in mid-May. We're doing this in three steps, okay? So what we'll probably do is come with a, with a rate recommendation based upon the decisions that are made at that time. So if you're going to find other city funds that you would apply to add to the, to the county's 500,000 during this interim timeframe, what we would suggest we do is modify the second year rate increase or the third year rate increase. So you keep on this timetable. You have the ability to come back and modify the rate ordinance at any time. So later this year, you decide you've got an extra 200,000 of city revenues you can commit each year for the next two years. We come back, we open up the rate ordinance, we reduce the big impact. So that's, that's how I would recommend doing it, to keep us on the timeframe. And I commend you, if you've got other funds that are available, keep in mind, you've got to commit them for a couple of years before that TIF money comes available. But that would allow you to have time to make that decision and still stay with the program timeframe with the SRF buying the bonds.
Speaking about time to make the decision, I'm just curious, we're in this time constraint to do this, 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 why would we not have this discussion in January, back in December?
Well, we were waiting for information from the engineers on current cost. I know the mayor was working over that timeframe to try to get the county's response to the request for the TIF money. So I think that's just, as you can see, because of the after plan, that's really just falling in place now.
These rate increases, I guess, you know, the question here, the comment, that a household of four, water bills about $17, $18, $19, it's substantially higher than that.
When you talk about averages, really hard to say what an average, but I did misstate it. Donnie, you were closer correct. If you could use 5,000 gallons or around, or actually 6,000 gallons, which is around 550 cubic feet, which is, if you take all your customers and divide them out, you're going to come in for the average, the cost you're paying right now is around $25. With the.
Just water?
Just water, just water. With the increase, if we don't have the TIF, you know, they're going to go to around $35 or around $10. If we have the 26, they're going up around $6 to, you know, around $30. That's average, but you're right. If you've got kids at home and you're doing laundry every other day and everything associated with that, you're going to be above average. If you're, you know, your kids have moved out and it's just the one or two at home, you're going to have less than. And that is just water and there's other fees on top of that, we all know. And it is, it's important to try to find every avenue that we can to try to keep those, those costs down. This is a major project for the city. That's why participating with the SRF program helps keep those costs down. Looking at TIF money to help buy down the rates is important to impact. So all those things are being studied to try to take what is a very major project, very important project for the city, and keep that impact to the rate pairs as low as possible.
The, the 1.5 million that is going to the water sewer bond right now, is that money that the county TIF controls or the city TIF controls?
It, by agreement, it's the city's money. The county can't, the county doesn't have to decide every year how much they're going to spend unless they're going to give you extra, like they're talking about for the next three years. But by the agreement, there's a split of the.
So the county gives the city 1.5 million?
And that's by the agreement.
And it's out of that 1.5 million, not all of that 1.5 million is going to pay the bonds?
Right now, at all.
So the, so the, so the other, so the other TIF revenue with the city RDC is the Walmart. And you have exclusive control of that. So would the project list for the city TIF have to be amended to allow the city TIF board to give 500,000?
No, because that is, that's a step that's called for in the statute for the body that, that actually creates the TIF area, and that's the county. And it's already, this project has been contemplated going all the way back to 2007.
So then after the end of three years, the city is still going to get 1.5 million?
Correct.
So the city TIF board could dedicate a bit if they wanted. And then you said that the payment would be over 20 years. Do we know about how much that payment will be every six months?
Yes, about, every six months is about 650,000.
And so we got, so we have no TIF support, then we have to support that with the rate increase, so.
Correct.
So as much as, so that's the goal, is how much can we get, about 1.3 million a year to defer.
Any other questions?
So John, what do we need to do at this point?
The only action that you're, you're taking officially is the first reading of the bond ordinance. I gave copies to Ash. Yeah, I didn't, I, I'm, actually, I've got. I've got a copy, so you each would have five or.
35 of them. This is the 46-page agreement.
And attached to that, you might as well get them all in case someone needs to start fires. The second is actually referred to in the body of the ordinance, it's the Financial Assistance Agreement, that are in terms of the program of the SRF. So that's what you'd be introducing this evening. That's the formal action.
So if there wasn't one that's not for Ashley, what would they be, because there's no number on there either.
I don't, I just don't know this this evening.
I guess technically it was advertised on this agenda, so I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to add ordinance 2019-10 on the bond ordinance, bond, bond ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We'll call the.
Is it, was that just to amend?
Just to amend, just to put it on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay.
So when, so when it talks about the 2007 series, that's the bond that we paid off?
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance 2019-10 on the first reading, understanding it's not final until the second reading. So we have played, we've got time to go through the package.
Second.
I'll second it.
We have a discussion, council. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Okay, so it passes on the first reading. Thanks.
See all of it?
Thank you.
Okay. Chief.
Good evening. I will only take up about an hour of your guys' time tonight. No kidding. Couple of things real quick, the, I'm sorry, Vieta, but Echo was unable to make it again tonight, but I will get her here, I swear. And the second thing on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 2019-8, seizure monies from the police department. We are going to table that, I've spoken with the city attorney and I'm going to try to get ordinance forms from other departments that are currently doing seizures. That way, we're not trying to reinvent something that's already been done. So I'm hoping to bring that back in front of the council next month. But just a real quick brief on the seizure is, there's something that's new that we are doing. We're actually using a law firm in Indianapolis to go through the seizure process and it's going to be items. Indianapolis to go through the seizure process, and it's gonna be items, monies that we forfeiture from individuals that are dealing and in possession of narcotics that are, we know that are gaining their finances and that through the narcotics. So again, I will get you ordinances and further explanation on that in April, if that's fine.
We need a motion to table this then?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, two thousand nineteen dash eight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Next thing I'm gonna speak about is the discussion for an IT engineer. Again, this is not a subject that I am well versed at, but I'm pretty much just gonna give the basics. You've all received a handout in your packets on what we are looking at possibly doing between the sheriff's department, Decatur County EMA, the Greensboro Police Department, the Greensboro Fire Department, and central dispatch. Currently, we are all running on part-time IT people, and unfortunately, we are not getting the dedication that all of our agencies need to get our servers and a lot of our equipment up to functioning where it needs to be. We are currently using a break-fix model, which unfortunately, we, if we have something that is going down, computers, servers, phones, we have to contact our part-time IT person and wait for them to be able to come in. Again, he's got a full-time job, so we are sometimes reliant on him and things could be down for two to three days. The biggest thing is, is the lives of first responders and citizens are at risk when communications are disrupted or failed during an emergency. One thing was brought up in one of the county meetings was, is there a point in time that we have ever experienced a issue where somebody resulted in death or that to communications? I can't think of one time, but it's like I told the Board of Works, I don't want to find out. This is something that we can definitely get ahead of, and I want to make sure that we're able to provide the best service that we can. So pretty much, how did we get here? Operational requirements, especially with communications. We've, with all the technology that we have seen, and even just the last two to three years, we are, again, quickly maximizing what we have, and we do not need something to go down to where it is affecting our communications. And that, again, this is gonna be troubleshooting requirements for the five agencies that I explained earlier. We are currently dealing with outdated or beyond end-of-life equipment. Decatur County has a core network, and the city has core network. One of them has been running since oh six and the other since two thousand twelve. We explained to the Board, the Board of Works earlier that right now they're in good shape, but in the future, we're definitely gonna have to show some need towards those so we don't get to the point where we do lose our communications and that. Again, one thing that we are also working against is the data and infrastructure from various threats, including social engineering, ransomware, and network intrusions. We did run into an incident a few months ago, reference to the ransomware, to where it did affect our system, and I believe so in the counties. It took several hours from our IT person to get that fixed. Actually, it actually took days upon hours. Also, when, like I said, he's gone full-time, so he was jumping back and forth. Again, we wanted to do preventative maintenance to not experience a catastrophic event. So what we're planning on doing, the way it should be fixed, is again, getting ahead of the game, making sure that our servers are up and going, they're running properly, fleet with, we're running, of course, computers in our vehicles. Our CAD system is all linked up between all agencies, which is Spillman, and our watch guard, of course, videos, our radios. All that stuff would be the responsibility of this IT engineer. And that, and I'm not, I don't, like I said, I don't know a lot about IT, but this is a position to where it cannot just be someone that holds an IT degree. It needs to be someone with a little more experience above that, because again, we're, we're getting into the core networks of the computers and that, so we need somebody that's above that IT position. And again, I'm, I'm not very familiar with IT, so I'm, again, I'm not trying to put any position down. And that sheriff brought up earlier, we could easily have an incident that occurred in Alabama where tornadoes went through and unfortunately killed twenty-plus people. Again, I'm sure there was communications that were knocked out during that. And again, if that situation happens here, then we are all gonna have to work together and we are gonna have to have somebody that will be dedicated to that situation for not only hours, but days, weeks, months. And again, that's what we're preparing to do, is again, if we're having any major issues, we have somebody that we can rely on, on a full-time basis. Short-term solution, of course, is doing what we're doing now. Again, I don't like that, just because we want to make sure that everything is up and running correctly. Long-term solution, network engineer with college education of at least five years, and somewhere that we know that we can contact twenty-four-seven and actually get him here within a appropriate time. As far as how this will be funded and where it will be funded, the, we've had several meetings with the county officials plus city and department heads, and right now, we feel like it would probably be best service to be a county employee, which would probably be in the nine-one-one, central dispatch sector area, kind of along with them. They would report to our advisory board, which is set in the local inter-agreement with the county, which is comprised of the sheriff, a volunteer fire, representative fire chief, police chief, and that. So again, equipment-wise, they wouldn't need a lot starting out. Again, it's, when they come in, they're gonna be figuring out, again, what we need to do. And Assistant Chief McNeely explained earlier to the Board of Works, again, we're sitting there looking at possibly major problems, but if we are ahead of the curve, then we will not have to be putting out the funding that we would if we wait too long. As far as the funding goes, again, I know that this is steep in somebody's, or some people's eyes. We're looking at a hundred thousand per, salary per year with benefits of approximately thirty-two thousand. The page right behind that, there's been a little bit of miscommunication on that. That is just the salary. That's not, if we added a bonus. We understand that this is gonna be a government employee, and we know that government employees do not get bonuses. So the projected salary in this area for an IT engineer is around one hundred and fourteen thousand, and again, we're projecting hopefully about a hundred thousand dollar salary. What are the consequences of that to fix? Again, a catastrophic network failure, increased maintenance and repair cost, and paid various vendors with limited knowledge to our system, and again, serious injury or death to a first responder or citizen and that. And going on with that, just recently, what we have experienced here in Decatur County and Greensburg, back in about two thousand and five, all law enforcement agencies went to the eight-hundred megahertz communication system with our radios. And just until about two years ago, county officers were not able to dis, or to communicate with dispatch down around Westport and Wetz. There was an area to where no radio, no cellphone, and that. And again, that's something that this person can be in dialogue with somebody from possibly Motorola to get these issues fixed. Recently, we had a spill, a Spillman outage, which is our CAD system. We had to call, contact Assistant Chief McNeely to come in along with our part-time engineer, or I'm sorry, IT person, and it was six-plus hours that they were working to get the Spillman system back up. VIA is a company that we use currently for these needs. We, while we had this Spillman outage, we contacted them, and unfortunately, they knew, but they failed to tell us that they had been bought out, and we were not able to use them for, the issue with Spillman because they were backed up on other issues. So unfortunately, we're not able to actually use their services. I can tell you that an IT engineer, if we hire a proper person, they will be able to take care of those issues that VIA is currently involved in, so we would be able to get rid of that VIA contract through dispatch, in my opinion. So that would free up some money in that aspect. Assistant Chief McNeely contacted Franklin, Shogaville, and Columbus today and yesterday, and they all have a citywide IT engineer and that. Again, we would be looking for this initially to be public safety, which would be funded through public safety funds. One thing, one figure that we're gonna get up, or get out to everybody before the next meeting, Councilman Polling asked for us to get an area of what it might cost or what we would have paid in the past year in IT, and the sheriff explained that it would cost about two hundred thousand dollars to bring in an IT person for a hundred dollars an hour from what they've experienced. And with us, it would probably be a little bit more than that. We're looking at probably two hundred and fifty thousand, because we are dealing with, again, our watch guard cameras that are integrated between body and the end cars. Again, every single vehicle has a laptop in it. We both agencies, again, have servers that are dealing with the Spillman issue and that. So again, I, I just think that we're probably a little bit behind in this of having an IT person, and I, I would like to at least start the discussion of making this happen. Again, I'm not looking for any approvals tonight. I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the council. If you guys have any questions for myself, Assistant Chief McNeely, Director Free, or Sheriff Durant, feel free to ask, and that, and like I said, we will definitely start looking at further down the road if that's something that we want to possibly do.
How much do we get, how much does the city share of the public safety?
So right now, I believe we get around five hundred and eighteen or five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year out of public safety.
Three of our officers and three of our firefighters.
Four firefighters, three others. Yeah, so currently, we, the PD is using one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for that, and the fire department's using a little over two hundred thousand. So that still leaves us with money there, and we also have a five hundred thousand dollar surplus right now in the public safety funds. So, now, I don't know what the county status is. They operate, I think they get eight hundred and some thousand dollars through their public safety. So again, that was, that's something we can definitely talk about.
And bring up the five hundred thousand as another surplus from last year's house that we did not...
I was thinking we had quite a bit of margin.
Correct, yes.
Well, I mean, are you thinking that this would be like an amendment to the agreement on our central dispatch agreement, what would we agree to pay whatever that portion is on that salary?
I think so. Again, I think it's something that we do, a lot like when we were coming together with central dispatch, maybe not as many key players, but I think we need to involve somebody, somebody from Board of Works, city council, along with the county councilman, the county commissioner, and bring this all together, because again, we're gonna have to redo our inter-local agreement. We're gonna have to, you know, come up with the job description, which, again, hopefully, we can get a hold of another city's policy to where we, we see what they're doing and that. But, yeah, I, I think it's something that we do definitely put in an inter-local agreement. Like I said, I know we're probably gonna have difference of opinions on certain things, so that's why I think we've come to the table, or not, should say immediately, but at the very get-go, to go ahead and start ironing out some of these issues that we might run into.
Is this something you want to accomplish this fiscal year?
Yes. Again, it's something that, it, it's a need. It's like I told the mayor...
I agree, I think it's very necessary.
Yeah.
Can you find out what's in the other cities, not only the people that have an IT, but maybe what that salary is?
Absolutely, absolutely.
No, but...
Yeah, I know, that's, and that's what we're finding out, is we're contacting others and we're like, okay, so, but...
You do understand the fifty-fifty split between the city and the county, and then, I don't know if you mentioned or not, but, but any of the equipment that we might need is gonna come out of our respective budget. So like if, so if I need equipment for my votes, that comes out of sheriff's department budget, laptops, air cards, things like that. So that, there would not be an additional deposit, if that makes sense. That's already gonna be budgeted for each department.
Then again, this IT person would also keep records of the inventory. Right now, again, they're coming out with FirstNet, their AT&amp;T, for priority calls with law enforcement and other emergency services. Verizon's also getting on board with that, and what that does is, is if we have a major event here and it knock, or everybody gets on their cellphones, if law enforcement is put on this plan through Verizon and we need to do, make communications, we actually will be able to kick off normal citizens because we're gonna be top priority by, again, getting emergency personnel where they need to. Again, that's something right now that I have my Assistant Chief working on, along with several other IT things. That can free him up, and the IT engineer will then take care of a lot of those issues that we're having with this and the MiFi's, cellphones and computer issues, so.
Have you, have you looked into whether or not there's a specific expertise study as far as people going, taking classes for IT, if this is like doing public safety work? If, if, is it... Do you have a school just to learn this type of IT work?
I would say yes. I'm sure there is.
Because I think you would need the...
Terminally, for the network engineer, basically somebody that understands how the server works, how it communicates through the lines, through the...
I'm thinking more public safety as far as...
All that deals with public safety.
Right, right, okay, I, I see what you're saying.
And I'm, I'm not sure.
Is that...
I, I don't know if there's one directly for public safety, because you're, you're dealing with the same type of equipment, whether you're on, working for Verizon or whether you're working for a city, or whether you're working for whoever.
I think that could also be vetted out in the, when, when we put out an application process too, to see, you know, what their experience is, where do they come from? Do they come from the city or county, or, you know, do they have that type of experience that might, that might be beneficial?
Well, I just know that the IT field is, it just keeps expanding.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I'm just thinking that maybe expertise in certain fields might...
That's definitely something to check.
Might be an option that you can look into.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other question, yes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is...
Zoning.
Rezoning, twenty nineteen dash nine ordinance, rezoning.
Bring that way down, they're short people. Good evening. Back on February twenty-seventh, the plan commission met, and we had a rezoning application before us. The address was two twenty, twenty-two, twenty-nine North Michigan Avenue. It's the two-story brick house on Michigan Avenue, just adjacent to the Hampton Inn. On, upon the application, it was talked about, the current zoning is B three. They're wanting to rezone it to R two, one and two family dwellings. There is a couple that is interested in purchasing the home to revamp the home back to its originality. I believe that he is present, Jim Hunter is the proposed buyer. And upon the plan commission's decision, they decided not to move forward with it. They are bringing this petition to the city council with an unfavorable motion not to rezone. So I believe Mr. Hunter would like to speak to the council if, if he can, please.
Yeah, my name's Jim Hunter, and I am approaching you today, hopefully, that, you know, just to at least get a chance, or just to give you, to think of possibly approving a rezoning or whatever I would have to do so I can bring this home back to the life that it used to have. I'm, you know, our, our H and H Investments, who are based out of Oregon, own the home. Since they've owned the home, within ten to twelve years, it has obviously, you know, gone in disrepair. Actually, it's starting to look like a nice warehouse as soon as you enter the city limits. They originally purchased it from the Mangols, who actually wanted to get the rezoning in order to put a strip mall, hopefully, in, in that area. So that, with that basis, that's how it got rezoned. It was on behalf of the homeowners at the time. In that time, our H and H Investments bought it open to what, all the movement of Honda and, you know, how property was going for a pretty penny then. They thought it would be a good investment. Well, since then, it has kind of ran itself dry, and they're looking to get out from, from under, after owning it for almost ten or twelve years. Some history on the house. Some history on the house, um, it was built in eighteen sixty-eight, uh, it was built for the sum of one thousand dollars back in that day. Uh, so more or less, it was built three years after the Civil War ended. In that thousand dollars, this, this home still has to this day, and if anyone is interested, actually, if, if you don't mind, I'd like for you just to at least look at the pictures of, not even a month ago, how this home, I took these pictures. Still has the original oak woodwork, two of the rooms still have it, two pedestal oak mantles, uh, has wood-inlaid floors with mahogany and cherry. This home is worth restoring. This home, by far, is just as important as your historic downtown square. You know, just because it's not on the square, it doesn't mean it's not important. Um, it is listed at the state as notable, you know, as far as the registry goes, and what notable is, is this rating means that the property did not meet or quite merit an outstanding rating, but is still above average in its importance. Further research may reveal that the property is eligible for a national registry. So as a, a citizen, if you move forward with your, your commercial zoning, which seems to fall stagnant in the last ten years right there, what if this house could be registered? And just because it's not on the square, doesn't mean it's not...